Good morning, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Friday, October 6, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that we all can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. The first and only item on our—well, the first item on our agenda this morning is a hearing regarding King Richard's Fair. So I'll open the hearing at this time. It's an emergency hearing to hear complaints about traffic, parking, and overcrowding conditions, and determine whether to modify, suspend, or revoke common victualler and alcoholic beverage license votes may be taken. All right. At this time, we've had—so everyone knows, we've had a number of public safety issues that come up that have been brought to the notice of the board, and I want to allow our public safety officials to speak to those issues. So Chief Doofle, I'll turn the meeting over to you at this time.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning. Before I start, I'll say that we've been working with the fair for many years, including the past three years, on these problems. And I hope that we can continue to do that, to work with the fair. Obviously, this is not us sitting here telling you we don't want the fair in town, but it is us sitting here telling you we've encountered some problems that are definitely impacting public safety and the delivery of public safety services to residents of the town and to visitors of the fair. Our concerns are based on the level of traffic. And as I said before, we've worked over the past three years to develop a traffic plan. And then we worked again last year to modify that, to include some alternate parking at other locations to deal with the level of cars that come into the fair. I can say that the fair has always been working with us and trying to move forward on that, but it has not, as evidenced by this last Sunday, come to fruition. This year, things have worked well up until this point. Ame every morning has shared with us where she thinks parking's going to go to, and it's been pretty consistent. However, without knowing that, it's very hard to still make plans. We have, on this past weekend, after having three Saturdays of rain and predicted Sunday to be well, Saturday during the day, I went over with my sergeants on how we would plan to practice moving cars through 58 up to the alternate parking lots to get ready. When I arrived on Sunday morning, a beautiful day and a day that people would like to come to the fair, I was told that we were—that they were not enacting the alternate plans. There was no buses in place, and that we would only be going to Sabre's Ave. I certainly wish that had been true. However, after a few hours of directing traffic, which went very well, filling their lots—they have a good crew that's working with us to fill their lots and fill them very quickly. However, we did fill all three lots very quickly in Sabre's Ave. Once that's done, we have a problem because we have people still coming to the fair who are now sitting in the queue on 58, causing a large backup of traffic. So when that happened, when we got to the point where the lots were full, we had sent officers to both sides to see how far traffic went. And traffic extended all the way up to at least the police and fire station on the north side, and all the way down to at least Indian Street, and sometimes all the way to Tremont Street on the south side. That is approximately from the fire station to Indian Street, 3.7 miles. And in there, you can hold approximately 975 cars in one lane. Many of those lanes were doubled up because the traffic was at a standstill because once the parking lots are full, as we've discussed in the past, we have to talk to every single person that comes by because they have—there's no plan for them to go. The plan was to have the alternate parking lots switch the signs over and direct them by signs to alternate parking lots. Without having any alternate parking lots, we had to speak to each customer, as we did last year, customers that were quite upset that they had purchased tickets online, couldn't get into the fair, and who wanted to continue the discussion with each of our offices as we went. But we had to bring out officers from inside the fair to do that. Myself—I was out there with Sergeant Rizzuto and other officers. We had four officers from the fair, in addition to the three officers that were on patrol that day, assisting with clearing up the traffic problem. Chief Weston came out to see what was going on, and he witnessed the same thing that I did, that the traffic on 58 was backed up. And at sometimes a complete standstill, at the very best, a very slow trickle as we tried to explain to each customer that they had to continue on. That provides for us one big public safety problem. And that problem is, everyone along that route who owns a home and is living in their home—if their house catches on fire or if they need an ambulance or they need anything else, there's going to be a delay in us getting there. At the very least, if there was a house fire, would it take us quite some time to clear those cars out, to get fire apparatus in there? And that's a big concern to all of us. In addition, without having a direction to park anywhere, people continued up into Carver Square and parked there, and then walked down. Something we've talked about before is that we can't have happen. People also parked on Shaw Road and on Meadow Street and on Crescent Street, and began to walk up from there. Our day shift officers responded to those locations, the complaints from neighbors about their driveways being blocked, about roads being blocked. We ticketed cars that we could ticket, and we ticketed and towed cars that were impeding either driveways or the flow of traffic. We did the best we could. It took everybody we had, all the officers I had on duty and all the officers that we had in the fair, and I called in two additional detail officers to help. This is a problem. This is a public safety issue. And we, as public safety chiefs and the town as the select board, I believe, has to take action to prevent this before there is a tragedy, before there is something worse that happens here. Again, nobody is here to say that we don't want the fair here, but we have to have the resources that we need to be able to deal with this. And we have to find a way to limit the number of cars coming into town that end up stopped on Route 58 because it's a public safety problem, and we cannot continue to have it. And I think that we have worked with them numerous times to accomplish this. Our DPW is working with them at merely the cost of their people. There's no charge for the trucks. There's no charge for fuel. Our offices are working with them. And our fire and EMS are working as well. Sometimes we've had to staff the fire departments when we can't get by because we have qualified fighters that have to get by the traffic. So sometimes the chief has had to make the decision to staff the fire departments. These are all public safety issues that we need to address, and we need to find a way through. And that's what I'm hoping we can do today with your assistance.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other chiefs that would like to speak to the board? Everyone good? All right. Chief Doofle, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Folks on the fair, I'd like to give you a chance to respond. Chief, you willing? Yeah, I think so you can both use the microphone.
Thank you very much. My name is Dan Walsh. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Lincoln. I'm here representing King Richard's Fair today. And I will note that I reached out to the chief. He called, but we haven't had a chance to—
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. I thought it would pick up. Thank you very much. So I'll just repeat that I did reach out to the chief. We have an chance to talk. Chief, thank you for your presentation. But what I understand—I just want to make it clear that the real issue this weekend was that Sunday where the traffic was backed up. You described along Route 58. Is that right?
Yes.
This season, has the traffic been under control otherwise?
So yes, the answer is yes, it has. However, this is exactly how we started last season. That's why we're here today, so we don't continue that.
No, and thank you very much. And as a result of last season, we met. There was a special committee formed. The emergency plan was developed. And again, we have the traffic plan that was engineered as well. All of those steps, it sounds like, are effective, but the particular problem happened Sunday with the traffic.
Well, I would say they've been effective so far because we haven't had the level of traffic we had. In my estimation, the level of traffic we had Sunday would have exceeded even the alternate lots that we had planned to put in place. So I think that's a part of the problem as well.
Okay. But Sunday, if—I just want to be clear too because we haven't had a chance to talk. One of the biggest factors was not having the buses available, would you say?
Yes, I would definitely say that.
All right. I think we've established the fact that Sunday was the biggest traffic problem so far.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Walsh, will you be speaking on behalf of the fair? Or anyone would—all of you would like to—
I would like to call Ame Sedley Shapiro.
Sure. If you could all just introduce yourselves to the folks at home.
Absolutely.
And just remember to speak into the microphone, okay?
I am Ame Shapiro Sedley. I am the general manager and co-producer of King Richard's Fair.
My name is Ryan Roy. I'm the production director for King Richard's Fair.
Thank you.
Good morning. Paul Cavanaugh, attorney with Daily Cavanaugh in Wells, Massachusetts, here for King Richard's Fair.
Thanks—you all for coming in this morning.
Thank you very much. We'd like to start our presentation with Ame speaking to the board.
So we put this together last minute, obviously because this was an emergency-called meeting. So what I'd like to say is that, first and foremost, before I even go into this, is that we are not a some fly-by-night carnival that comes in and leaves and leaves a mess in the town and leaves—you know, we come in—we've been here for 42 years. That's a long time. That might be even longer than probably 80% of the residents that live here. We are a family-run business. We work all year. It's really hard all year to come in to just hopefully be able to be open for 18 days. As you know, the weather has been horrific this entire year. I just saw on the news last night, 16 of the 19 weekends that have been from the summer till where we are now have been full of rain. That affects our business. Weather is our biggest challenge. We can have the best show with the best ideas and attendance, evenly distributed throughout all the weekends, which is one of the things we did try to do and work with you on this year. But if it rains, we can't tell people when to come. So we've been here for 42 years, family-owned and operated. Bonnie, who is my mom, who is the producer and owner, would have liked to have been here, but she is taking care of her husband, who has not been well. And she resides in California. So it would have been a very difficult trip for her to get here in such a short amount of time. Next, please. Something else I want to say too is, over—the—so for 42 years we've been here, I've worked with this business and our business for 28 years. And we have worked very well with the town, all the emergency chiefs and boards. And we want to continue that. That's the most important thing. We want this to be passed on to our kids, generation. It's really important to us. We feel that we do bring a lot of things to the town, not just employing, you know, approximately 400-plus residents. And we're not the only business. All of the artisans that are there, that come from all over the country, they are independent vendors and businesses that pay to be at the show. So attendance and people coming in is equally as important to them as it is to us, obviously. And so we employ the town. We're usually the first job for many of the town kids. They also employ a lot of the adults. And I would say that we probably have over 400 local residents between King Richard's Fair itself and their businesses. We also employ the Carver Police Department for their details and traffic. We employ now the Carver DPW to help with all the cones and the traffic control that we've established. We provide free admission, which we've done for 42 years, to all of Carver on our opening weekend. And we generate a lot of income for the local businesses during the two months that we are here. The gas stations, the restaurants, the Dunkin' Donuts. And if I had had more time to prepare, which I wish I could have because I just flew in yesterday so I could get here for this meeting, I would have had some of the businesses be able to testify to that.
And just so I can say, I understand you flew in early just for this, and we certainly appreciate it.
No, of course. This is—obviously, this is our business. We work—again, we work all year to just hopefully be open. And saying that too, because the weather has been so horrific, of the 11 days we've been able to operate, we've been closed two and a half of those days, couldn't even open. And then every weekend, it's rained at least one or both of the days. And obviously, no one has control of the weather. If we did, we'd be gone. But so, you know, we're trying to survive in order just to open our doors. For—not only for us, but for our performers that also come from across the country to perform and entertain and—as well as for the artisans and the businesses that are at our show. So last year—well, actually, for the past three years, as the chief affiliate said, we have worked with—well, let me back up, if I may, just for a second. In 2020, we were shuttered. We couldn't open. It was COVID. We were lucky just to survive. In 2021, we had no idea how we would do because things were just starting to reopen. I think we were successful because we were an outdoor business and people weren't as scared about continuing to get COVID. We found some traffic issues. So we agreed and worked with the town to put together a traffic committee based with the EMS chief, police chief, fire chief, DPW chief, Mr. Fennessy, and emergency management director to work together to come up with an idea that would help us. So we did. We did. We worked. We hired an engineering company that built and did all engineering studies for Gillette Stadium and Xfinity Center. We—at a great cost to us—and I know that means nothing to you guys, but for a great cost to us for a business that only operates for such a short period of time. You know, we're not a show that goes on to every, you know, town and state like some do. We don't. This is our one and only. So we worked together. We hired it. We came up with it. The engineer said, "I've never seen an event park cars so well in the space that you do." And he said, "And this is what I think, based on the cars and the volume of where you need to have new signage, cones, everything." We took his advice. We worked on it. It worked very well until last year when we had that one rainy day and then the Columbus Day weekend, which we all know was the crazy weekend that has never happened in 41 years. So after that year, we all agreed. We met, and we decided to continue with the committee that we had been working with. And we came up with adding more cones and more signage and extending it in hopes that we would still be able to have traffic go through and not a problem. And it has worked. It has worked well. I also know that Chief De Philly made a point of saying to us and to everybody during all the meetings and the board meetings that we'd had last year that this is something new. This is something we're trying. It's not going to be a perfect fix. We will have to work as we go when a situation comes up. We also decided to go to a dated ticketing system. Now, this is new for us. In 41 years, we've never had our guests say they had to pick a date that they were coming. And then with some of the rain days, the guests are now calling and saying, "Well, how can I change my ticket?" So we're dealing from an operational standpoint, just within the fair and management, with a whole new system that we've never had to deal with either. But it has worked out. It has worked out well. We have support from our ticketing company. The one thing that is not perfect, and it will take time, is for all those people that have been coming for 41 years to wake up and see a beautiful day and say, "Hey, let's go apple picking. Let's go to a corn maze. Let's go to King Richard's Fair." And they drive from New Hampshire, Connecticut. And that is something that we can't control. There's no way we know that these people are coming. They may not look at social media. They may not know, "Oh, I have to buy a ticket in advance." So that's something that we are trying to internally work on and getting the message across. Our publicist, who is also here today, she's done a great job with our social media and with our website and encouraging people to buy tickets in advance, online, and now with the dated tickets. So that is something that we are continuing to work on. As for Sunday, let's talk about buses now for a second and parking lots. So we did put together a satellite parking lot plan. We worked with Superintendent Niff—Nief?
Niff.
Thank you, Niff. And Mr. Griffith and the Carver School Board to come up with employing their bus drivers on the weekends if we needed them. They originally—this is a negotiation. They had originally said, "Well, we need two weeks' notice to order the buses so that our drivers can plan," which we had said, "Well, God, if we knew what the weather was going to be like or what our crowds would be like, that would be fabulous because then that takes more pressure off of any of us." So we ended up agreeing that by Wednesday before a weekend is when we would need to let them know if we needed drivers. Wednesday came for this past weekend, and we didn't have enough pre-sold tickets to even fill our first lot in our parking lot. So I couldn't order the buses because there was no reason to spend money that we didn't need. Saturday was going to rain. We looked at Sunday. Sunday's attendance was less than Saturday's on the rain day. So I didn't order buses. I can cancel the buses on a Friday. I still have to pay for the driver's time because they decided to take the time off, but the buses would not be charged. But even on Friday, when I look—and I look, you guys, probably every hour to see where the pre-sold tickets are so we know our numbers. And nothing, even by Friday night, not even enough to fill two of our lots. Saturday came. It was an okay day. We filled a couple lots. It was rainy, horrible in our fair site with mud and puddles. Sunday came. I got to the fair site Sunday, and that's when I talked to the chief. I said, "Well, we haven't even sold out of the amount of tickets that we were letting be online tickets," which is something we took when we decided to go to dated tickets. We decided that we would take what we thought would be a good day, filling all three lots, maybe savory, and limit it to that so that we didn't have traffic backup and we didn't have to worry and have you guys get calls or us get calls because it hurts our business when people can't get into the fair also. And the one factor was people deciding to look. It's beautiful. Let's just go to the fair. So we found out that it had hit that limit. That's about half an hour before we opened. We stopped selling any—I mean, it automatically shuts off to sell tickets. We stopped selling tickets. We had very, very limited tickets bought at the gate so that in case someone just showed up and drove, you know, the two or three hours from New Hampshire, Connecticut. And then everything was going. We were filling our parking lots fast, and then the traffic hit. And that's where I was working with Chief De Philly on it. And we were doing whatever we possibly could to get more people in the parking lot as people started to leave. And of course, with the town square, which we could use if we had had the buses, if we had known, if we had had any inclination whatsoever that it was going to be that kind of a day, which we didn't. There was no way to tell in all the steps that we had taken. And people decided just to park there on their own, and then they decided to walk. So that was what we were dealing with. And again, I want to say, as Chief De Philly had said many, many times during all of our meetings and our board meetings last year, this isn't a perfect solution. It's something that we are working with, and we will have to work as it goes to make steps to change. So going back to this, you guys had—oh, thank you. You talked about our common victualler license. Well, from what I understand about that license, we are doing everything that we are supposed to do and we have always done appropriately in order to have that license. We have our properly trained food staff. We have the health inspector that comes before the fair, during the fair. Everything has been going as planned, as it always has, in 42 years. We have a company that we've been working with. They're an international corporation that does this all over the world. And they are the ones that are in charge of running our food and beverage operation, and they've been amazing. And we haven't had any issues or problems. Going to our liquor license, I know this was a question too. All of our bartenders are tips-trained. All of our patrons are checked for IDs. They get a bracelet. They can only have two beverages at one time. If there's ever an issue with someone that may look—I mean, we check bags when people come in, obviously, for safety concerns. We check—we don't allow outside food or beverage. We don't want people bringing in alcohol or food. And that way, we are able to control it to make sure that if, God forbid, there was an issue with someone getting sick, that we knew that it was an internal issue, not someone just bringing in a bad bologna sandwich and getting sick or something to that effect. So we are very, very alert when it comes to working with also the Carver Police Department and anyone being served alcoholic beverages. I kind of went through this, and I jumped ahead with all the improvements that we have made and agreed to, and the town has agreed to, and the traffic plan committee has agreed to. I think that Sunday was nothing like, thank God, what Columbus Day weekend was last year. And I think that we are working to secure ways to not have that happen again. And what I have done thus far for basically the next three weekends that we have left and in anticipation of this being a three-day weekend, I've hired all the buses. I already took care of that. If it rains and we don't need them, we'll have just to eat the cost because we just want it to be safe and have people that can—you know, we added more signage, so we have bus stops. We have everything all organized. We've hired the buses. We will be using the auxiliary lots if we need them as they come. And we have lowered even more so—and I'm hoping it's not to a detriment that it's going to hurt us—the cap that we have put on for online sales. Lowered it a bunch more so that in case people aren't getting the message, which I don't know how they couldn't, but we have, like I said, 41 years of people just used to this, that we still have some room for them to be able to come and enjoy. So that is what we are planning to do for the remaining dates of the fair season so that we don't have a situation like this again. Because not only is it obviously upsetting to the residents and to the police officers who have to stop and talk to cars, but it greatly affects us too and our customer base because they're angry that they can't come and they've driven for so many hours or whatever to be at the fair. So that's what we've done in anticipation for the last three weekends. And I don't know. I think that's the last page. Yeah, that's the last page. So I don't know if anyone—actually, I wanted to—if it's okay with you, I wanted to ask two of Carver residents that live in right in the vicinity.
Are they speaking on behalf of the fair?
Well, as a Carver resident, dealing with traffic and stuff because—
At your request?
Yes, at my request.
That's fine.
Sorry. That's what I meant. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michelle Nealon, and I live on Meadow Street. So as you can see, I'm very close to where the fair is located. Overall, there is no impact. I mean, the flow of traffic has been amazing. I mean, the flow of traffic has been amazing. Yes, there were some glitches on Sunday, but I have faith that they will figure it out and work it out. But what they do for this town in general is just amazing. You talk to any of the vendors, you know, cumbies, they just talk about how much business is brought in by the fair, and they appreciate it. You know, Fiesta Char, all of the local places, they just appreciate how much. Because this is really, King Richard's Fair has put Carver on the map. I mean, when you say, I live in Carver, people are like, Harvid? I'm like, Carver, King Richard's Fair, oh, yes. So it brings so much to this town, and I appreciate, I appreciate the day, you know, that all Carver residents can come in for free and things, but I don't have an issue with it. I think it's been amazing, and, you know, I have faith that they will all work together.
And because she lives, because she lives on Meadow Street, which is close and has been one of the streets that was an issue last year, that's why I asked her to testify.
My name's Christine Raymond. I've been a longtime resident of Carver. I also work for King Richard's Fair as well as living here. I've been the box office supervisor for seven years now, and I previously lived on Indian Street, so I've dealt with the lot tracker when they had Ediville, the Cranberry Festival, and all that other stuff going on. And I think it's a much better flow now. We work very hard to make sure that people are able to get into the lot. We move people around where they're needed. So I think the impact that traffic has had for the few weeks that we're here, I think it helps the town out more with the people coming into town and shopping the business and staying here than harm is being done.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Eddie?
And I would just like to say real quick again as well. Obviously, I was here over the winter and involved with some of the development of these emergency plans, things like that. It has been the goal of Ame and Bonnie to make sure they are working with the town, and I think that they have shown you that in terms of being open and being part of these meetings, putting out as an expense to themselves and the business quite a great deal to make sure that these things are here and that these things are happening. Now, obviously, there was some sort of breakdown on Sunday. I think that human error happens. Sometimes it is trial and error, sometimes it is trial and success. I think that definitely during those meetings over the winter, there was a discussion that these things would be trial and hopefully success, but that there could be the possibility that something might happen and that traffic would still be there. So obviously, we don't want that either, and we're hoping to continue to work with you folks to make sure that it does not and that there is better things happening with regard to that. So that's really all, and I think Ame had summed everything else up pretty accurately.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corbo.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
No, if you could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Great, thank you. Good morning. My name is Greg Corbo. I'm town council for the town of Carver, and I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to clarify the ticket sale procedures. So did you say now you're only selling date-specific tickets?
Yes, so I would say about, huh, I sound so Minnesotan, about, seven years? We got one online? About seven years ago, we decided to sell tickets online in general, and then this is the first year that we have ever sold tickets dated specific, you had to buy the ticket for the date, yes.
So then what happens if a person buys a date-specific ticket and then it's raining on that day?
Well, that's a good question. If we are open, well, it's a couple of things. If we are open, then yes, they do need to use that ticket. However, if they see that it's going to rain and they decide they don't want to come, they are able to change their ticket for another available fair date.
And if they do that, if they change their ticket, does the, does the capacity get taken into account, meaning that if you've already sold out the date they want to change to, are they not able to change to that date?
Correct.
Okay. And so with the situation that we had on Sunday, the parking was full, so how do you handle communicating to your guests that parking is full, we can't take any more visitors today?
Well, when we hit the limit of online sales, our publicist immediately put on social media, our Instagram, our Facebook, all of our social media, as well as our website, that online ticket sales are sold out for today. So we did that immediately. But if you're already in the car, again, driving a couple hours, you're not necessarily looking at our website or the social media, and it all depends on age range, two of the people coming, some people might not even be on social media. It depends.
Okay, so there's really no way then that sort of once the day is in motion to get people not to come?
The only way that we can prevent people from coming is when they look at buying their ticket online and it says sold out, or they are on social media and they see our information saying sold out. If someone is already in the car on the way from New Hampshire to buy a ticket at the gate, which they're, you know, when I say tickets at the gate, we're talking maybe a couple hundred people. We're not talking thousands and thousands and thousands of people that buy at the gate anymore. Most people like to buy online, and it's, we have to teach our audience that they need to buy their tickets online and in advance. We've been publicizing that all year long, but it's going to take time. I mean, we, people are used to buying at the gate and coming in. And now people, I think in general, whether it's a movie theater or, you know, going to Six Flags or something to that effect, people want to make sure they have a ticket. We want the people that buy a ticket to get into the fair site. So it's more important to us to emphasize that with our audience.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before I turn it over to the board, is there anything else any of you want to say?
Yes, Mr. Council, I'd like to make a couple of comments, and then I think Attorney Kavanaugh has some comments as well.
Okay.
If there's a message we want to get across today is that the fair wants to work with the town of Carver, and they've demonstrated that, especially over the last couple of years with the traffic plan, the emergency operation plan, excuse me, I know that Ame and Ryan have a good working relationship with the chief as well. That's their sole objective. They want to be a good neighbor in Carver. The other thing is that it was very difficult to pull together even a PowerPoint presentation for this meeting. We had about 48 hours to kind of get our thoughts together and hopefully adjust the issues of the board. It was very difficult in such a short period of time. And lastly, and Ame described this, but I really want to emphasize that the online ticketing is a brand-new tool for King Richard's Fair. And Ame is on there monitoring the sales, and she tells me it's almost hourly checking these things. That's a tool they've got to learn how to use, and she was using it to the best of her ability leading up to that Sunday. She was reading all of those indicators which pointed in one direction, and unfortunately, the traffic went in another direction. So I, hopefully, the board and other residents of Carver would agree that this year has been an improvement over last year, I think, and it'll just keep getting better, hopefully. And I guess lastly, we're here because of traffic and parking. You know, the notice mentioned the possibility of suspending or revoking licenses. So obviously, it's a very, very serious matter, and Attorney Kavanaugh wanted to express a couple of thoughts about that.
Again, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I do have a letter to submit to the chair. I've brought multiple copies, you know, for everyone and enough for town council as well, which, in which I explain what I see as a number of legal issues that would arise if the board were to modify, suspend, or revoke either license. So I'd like to submit that to the board, and I can just sort of quickly go through without reading it in its entirety. To the board, what I see there is some of the issues from a legal point of view. So I'm not, you know, we recognize and appreciate that, one, you know, the town's dealing with an issue here with the traffic and with the public safety comments from the chief. But nonetheless, because I'm the lawyer, I'd like to make some, just some legal points on that.
Okay. Before we start, Mr. Corbo, any issues with that? And would you like a brief recess to review the letter so you can respond?
No problem with that, and I will reserve on the issue of recess.
Are you letting me know?
Probably won't be necessary.
Thank you, thanks. Okay.
Should I approach the chair?
Sure. Just pass them out. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
traffic, parking management, and overcrowding, and the notice goes to the common victualist license and the all-alcohol license. So the common victualist license is governed in state law by Chapter 140 of the general laws, and the all-alcohol license is governed by Chapter 138. So looking at the common victualist license, Chapter 140, Section 9 is the section that provides for suspension or revocation. It doesn't actually address modification. As to the all-alcohol license, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64 provides that the license may be modified, suspended, or revoked. And as Mr. Walsh noted, that's after notice and a reasonable opportunity for a hearing, and we object, of course, to the 48-hour short notice. I understand that you're working on a perceived emergency basis, but nonetheless, you know, it was a very short notice in order to respond, and here we, but here we are. The common victualist license provides that it expires at the end of the year, which is what they do, and doesn't really have any conditions on it. So it expires at the end of the year, doesn't have conditions, and we would suggest that the matters that are brought up don't actually go directly to the common victualist license. Now, under 140, Section 9, which is the session, the section for suspension or revocation, the board could suspend or revoke if it finds that the licensed business was being conducted in an improper manner. And I would suggest from all the testimony today, including the chief who testified first, the testimony from Amy and from the other witnesses, that what you have is a licensed business that's cooperated with the town and its public safety officials to develop plans to address traffic and parking, and it has worked along with those plans. Now, the plans may not be perfect, and as has been said, are a work in progress, but I don't see and don't think the board could find substantial evidence to support a finding, which is the standard, substantial evidence to support a finding, that it was, the business itself is being operated improperly. It's not the business that was being operated improperly, it's being operated along with an agreed-upon plan. Now, the alcohol license, again, it doesn't cite any, doesn't have any conditions on it other than dates, and it provides the dates of operation, the 18 days from September into October, provides hours of operation, I think it's 10:30 to 6:00 p.m., and provides that it expires on October 22 at 6:00 p.m. So we're almost there to the end of the, the end of the alcohol license and to the end of the operating season, as has been pointed out to the board, that they're only open 18 days at this time of year, and that's it. So we're almost there. Now, you can, under 138, Section 64, the licensing authority may modify, suspend, or revoke, or cancel a license upon satisfactory proof that a licensee violated or permitted a violation of any condition of its license. And I suggest there's no, there's been no testimony or evidence that that happened or violated the laws of the Commonwealth. So any law of the Commonwealth, but there's been no testimony or evidence that the licensee, King Richard's Fair, violated any law of the Commonwealth. So again, there's not substantial evidence to support a finding, which would be that that had occurred and therefore would give you the authority to modify, suspend, or revoke. Then, again, as Mr. Walsh had, you know, the fair wants to, and it's demonstrated that it wants to work with the town, its public safety officials, and try to address the issues that have arisen. But nonetheless, I'm here, as I said, as the lawyer. So as a lawyer, I'm going to do lawyer things. And I believe we have substantial appeal grounds if adverse action were to be taken. I'm not, you know, the board hasn't made up its mind, and so that hasn't occurred, but if it does, there is, there are appeals that we could take. We could bring an action to Superior Court to appeal any suspension of the common victualist license, and that would be done directly under Chapter 249, Section 4. If the board were to modify the all-alcohol license, that's appealable to the ABCC, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. And if the board were to modify both of them, there's a five-day period during which the entity, the licensee, could, has to appeal, to file that appeal to the ABCC. And under 138, Section 12, there's a stay on the board's decision under that route, if we were to follow that route. There's a stay, so it couldn't enforce its decision. And then the ABCC has 30 days to make its determination on any such appeal, which then brings us after October 22, which sort of defeats the whole purpose of what the board's trying to accomplish, and what I think the fair's trying to accomplish, which is to work together and address, and address these issues, and let's try to do that in a cooperative But if we go down the other route, you know, it could be that, and I don't think either party wants it, and I'm not suggesting that they do, but, you know, we could end up in more of an adversarial position where we're saying, all right, fine, you know, I'm going down this route as attorney for the fair, not, I'm saying the fair wants it, but they have to protect their business, and then we're going to be beyond October 22 in that event. So I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted. The board understood just the legal position. I know you're not all sitting here as lawyers, and we've got Mr. Corp here, who is the lawyer, who may dispute some of this, but nonetheless, I thought it was, be fair to the board to let you know what I see as the attorney for, as one of the attorneys for the fair, as legal positions we could take. So thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for listening and for your time spent.
Just very, very quickly, I know this is Friday morning for all of you and probably have other things to do. I would just again like to, I think it's very important to remind the board that arrangements are in place for buses for the rest of the season. I think that's very important to keep in mind. And also, if the board could speak to any other complaints it's received, the chief described a few, but the notice mentioned numerous, so if the board has any other information on that, we'd be interested in hearing that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on behalf of the fair?
No, all I want to say too is, yes, we have the buses in place for the rest of the season, as well as I have again lowered the limit of online tickets in order to bridge that potential gap of people just deciding to come on down. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anything else from our public safety officials? Mr. Chief DeFili? Why don't you folks maybe stay here, and maybe the chief could take that other seat, and Mr. Corbo, you could share your mic. That way, we don't have a constant back and forth here.
Thank you for a little follow-up in the presentation. Certainly agree with a lot of the presentation. They are a good business in town, and they do bring a lot to the town. But I will follow up on a couple of points that were made and questions that were asked of me. Is the traffic working better this year than last? So the answer is, it is just like it was last year. The first few weeks of the year are very slow, and the traffic pattern, everything's worked very well. We've worked very well. Ame has provided us with updates along the way, but that same thing happened last year. In about this time last year, it all fell apart, and we see it all falling apart again this year. Ame made a comment about that they, she's not sure how we oversold on Sunday, only sold a few online. a few online, and you're only selling a few, you sold a lot online, you're only selling a few walk-up tickets. But I think it's clearly evident by the number of cars that were still on the road that that's not true, because the people that we talked to in the road, myself and my other offices, every single one of them said, "I bought tickets online, I drove here from New Hampshire, and I can't get in the parking lot." So, clearly, the numbers aren't correct, because you had people come in that must've bought tickets online, and must've bought tickets at the fair, and you still had all the rest of the people sitting in the, in the road that couldn't get in. So, I kind of disagree on that, that this ticketing scheme is working the way you thought it was. I obviously believe that it must be that people coming in, buying tickets at the fair, are a larger number than, than we're talking about, because that's why we're having the backup in the road. So, I just, I think that's a problem we've got to solve, and you're right, I have said this, this is a work in progress. But it's a work in progress that I, as the chief of police, cannot condone, that we just keep trying it as we go. We have to come up with solutions along the way in real time. And I, and I think that we were unable to do that on Sunday, and I think that if we continue to do that, we're going to have, we're going to continue to create public safety problems in the, in the parking lot. I would also add, I would also say that I've heard people testify about, that it's not as bad this year as it was before. However, I have not seen anyone from the fair come out and see the impact in the road. And I know you're busy, and I get you're running a business, but the comments we're making are based on what you're seeing in the fair, and my offices that are working in the fair are seeing large crowds, and my offices that are working in the road, including myself, are seeing the road backed up. And I don't believe that that's being considered in this discussion. I think that because you haven't seen it, it's hard for you to understand it. I would argue that Sunday was as bad as last year's Columbus Day, as far as in the road. We had three miles, 3.7 miles of traffic backed up. That's a lot of cars being sitting in the road, and the public safety issue is that it blocks the road. I would also agree that we have worked very hard over the past three years to get to this point. We've instituted excellent new emergency plans for inside the fair. Your parking personnel inside the parking lot do an excellent job, and filling up your parking lots is no problem at all. The parking lots get filled in a very timely manner. We've all worked together to assess that. That's, that's not the problem. Parking in the fair is not the problem. Having no place to put cars after those lots are full is the problem. And we need the resources to be able to deal with that, because as your public safety chiefs, as your chief of police, that leaves a problem in 58, not inside the fair. Well, there's a problem inside the fair, too, but the problem is in 58, where we don't have the ability to get public safety to the people who live along that roadway. And when I need to bring officers out of the fair to work on the road, I have less officers in the fair with the crowd. That's a public safety issue in addition. So, those are things that we have to solve, that we have to find a way to work through. They're not insurmountable, but we have to find a way through those. As I mentioned, the emergency plan is very well. Our offices that are on the street are not upset at all. They're disappointed, your customers are very upset, and we're trying to work through that, but that adds to the problem, is that we have to talk to every person and try to give them, okay, sorry, you gotta go somewhere else, there's nowhere else to go, you can't park on the side of the road. Those discussions take a long time, and they actually impact the level of traffic that exacerbates the problem. And, and I would argue, not argue, but I would say that, I know you only had 48 hours to prepare for this, but we've actually been preparing for this meeting for three years. And, and what we continue to do is create a foreseeable public safety issue in the road that we're not addressing, that has to be addressed, and that's the issue here. This is not, I don't believe that we're anyways asking the board to close the fair. We're asking the board to more strongly encourage some cooperation and get this done, because we cannot continue to support a public safety problem in 58. We can't. The town doesn't have that ability. We can, we can dispute the fact that the number of people that come in, but I've seen with my own eyes the number of people come in, and I still argue that we're nearly doubling the population of this town in a few hours, and we need the resources to deal with that. And not knowing the numbers that are coming is a, is a planning nightmare for us. We don't, we can't plan on it, so we're, we need our resources in place to deal with that all the time. It's just a part of a cost of doing business. I, I think the fair is a good business in town, but I think the fair is also the only business that I'm aware of in town that creates this, this issue for these few days of the year that we've got to deal with. So, I don't have any other, other businesses that I would say that you, that plugs at 58 that causes that public safety problem, so we have to work together to come up with that, and I believe that we have tried to, and I hope that we'll continue to try to. But I have to impress on the board and the fair that this is a public safety problem, and before a tragedy happens, people walking down the road, and a baby carriage gets run over, or somebody's house burns to ground, and we can't respond to it, we, as the public safety chiefs, you as the town leaders, and the fair as a business, have to work together to make sure that doesn't happen. So, I, I hope that that's added to it. I, I certainly hear the legal arguments from a lawyer, and I've been 29 years of, of working with lawyers, and I get their side, too. So, there's three sides to this that you have to look at, and you've heard from all of us, and I hope you can use that information to, to make a quality decision.
Can I reply to one?
Sure. And Chief, if you don't mind, go, why don't we just, if you could just stay there, will we turn it over to the board in case some members of the board have some questions?
Okay, a couple of things. One, in regards to Sunday being compared to the last Columbus Day weekend, I know what our numbers were, and we were thousands of people down from that. I know, I know that as a fact, not saying the people backed up on the road, but in general. We also didn't have people like we did walking with baby carriages down the middle of 58. No cars were parking on 58, thank goodness, because of you guys, as well as putting the no parking signs along 58. As, that's what...
Amy, I don't, I don't want to go back and forth in a public meeting about this, but you did have people walking down 58. I had extra cruisers put on to guide them from Carver Square.
From the town of Carver, yeah.
From Carver Square. So, you did have that, and, and I would say, based on, I, I don't know the numbers, we don't, we don't receive the numbers from you, but I would still say that based on the numbers that I saw in the roadway, the same numbers that I saw last year, that I, I would compare the traffic to this, to last year. I don't know if it compares to your numbers who came into the fair, but it certainly compares traffic-wise.
And inside the fair as well, it was not, there was no overcrowding situation. That I know. I can tell, I'm in there, I'm working it, so at least I can just, I can say that from this side of it, not seeing what you saw on the road. And by putting the buses in place and the parking in place, moving forward, whether it's gonna be a rain day tomorrow, which kills us, and then next weekend's looking like two rain days, we're not gonna have those kind of issues in general, but I still have the buses signed up for it, and the parking signed up for it, and limiting online sales.
I appreciate everyone's comments, and I, and I don't want to not give people a chance to say what they need to say, but I also know that some members of the board have time challenges this morning. Mr. Ryan, I know you have a challenge at 9 o'clock. Are you able to spend a few more minutes with us?
Yes, I'll keep going. Excuse me, I just...
Okay. Texted and said I'll be late. All right. Please, please let me know if you need to...
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Corbo, before we proceed, do you want to respond to some of the legal issues that have been brought up?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how close I have to be to this thing.
I think you're fine.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it would make sense if I provided some guidance to the board regarding your authority with respect to the licensing of the fair. So, as, as we are all aware by this point, the fair has two licenses issued by this board, a special, what they call one-day liquor license to serve alcoholic beverages. They call it a one-day license because it covers less than the full year, but in this case, it, it actually covers several days. And then, they have a common victualist license that authorizes the preparation and service of food. Now, what they do not have is a, a license to present public shows, amusements, or exhibitions under chapter 140, section 181. And when I spoke, first spoke with the town administrator about this, I was actually quite surprised, because, you know, it is quite common for there to be fairs of this nature in the Commonwealth, and they're required to be, have this type of entertainment license. And that's certainly something that we can work on going forward for next year. In addition, the vendors who sell products at the fair are required to have transient vendor licenses, which require background checks of the vendors, and that's not happening here either. So, you know, certainly, we may not be under a perfect licensing scheme, but, you know, it is generally accepted principle of municipal law, that when you deal with a municipality, the risk is on you to make sure that you have all of your proper approvals in place, not on the board. And so, you know, hopefully, we will not have to bring this matter to a court, but if we were, then, you know, we would have to look into whether this business is even being properly licensed. But turning to the licenses that we do have in place, you know, the purpose of these licenses is not simply to ensure that food and alcohol service is conducted properly, but rather, the law makes very clear that the purposes of these licenses is to ensure that the businesses are not detrimental to the community. The law in chapter 138 specifically states that there is no right to an alcoholic beverages license, that the licenses should only issue when there is a public need, and ensuring that the business is conducted in a manner that is sufficient to protect the public good. So, it's my opinion, through you, Mr. Chair, that, you know, issues such as traffic are a direct consequence of the service of alcohol and the service of food at this event, and are squarely within the authority of the board when deciding whether to look at these licenses, and deciding whether to revoke or rescind these licenses, or to further condition them. But the final thing that I will add is on an element of procedure, and that is that with respect to the alcohol license, because this is a special license under section 14 of chapter 138, there is no appeal to the A B C C, and there is no stay pending any sort of appeal. So, yes, there might be a certiori claim to Superior Court, but your, any decision you make would remain in effect while that appeal was pending, and there would have to be compliance unless a court orders otherwise. So, you know, we're not here to litigate a case. Hopefully, we won't have to litigate a case. But, you know, it is my opinion that taking action with respect to these licenses, based on the concerns raised by the public safety chiefs, is squarely within the authority of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. I do, just quickly, I really don't want to get into a legal...
Just wanted to correct one thing about the other licenses that Attorney Corbo cited. The King Richard's Fair does have those licenses. They're just not an issue. It's all...
Okay. 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 Moving forward, before we turn it over, Mr. Fantas?
There's no licenses in the file of those, entertainment license and the, the transient workers license.
So, the transient vendor's license is an optional license that we have let, in our contracts with all of our artisans, know that if they are asked to do that, then they have to do that. That's one thing. The second, the second thing is, the, every year, we fill out permits and applications for many different things, one of them being amusement attractions, railroad, and festivals permit. So, we, we do have that.
Is that with the state?
No, that's with, I think, I don't know if it comes through the Board of Health, or the, all I know is, I keep filling things out and have, paying for...
We'll clarify that.
Okay.
All right. Just a couple of things before we turn it over to the, to the board here. So, I just want to point out, no one, no one is questioning the quality of, of the fair here, and I think we all understand the, the challenges that weather creates for you folks. But the fact of the matter is, if one day has rained out, and that means people shift their tickets to another day, there's still only so many places to park cars. And, and I think that's the issue here, and that's the issue we've been dealing with in a number of meetings since last year, and a, and a number of you folks have been here at those meetings, and we appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is, it, it's not, it's a public safety concern when those cars are parked in a way that, that inhibit our public safety departments. And it, it's not just the residents of Carver. We have to remember, it's the folks coming and going to the fair. They're parking on unfamiliar roads, roads that are dark, roads that don't have streetlights or in sidewalks. They're parking to the fair, and when they leave at 6:00, 6:30, it's dark, and they have to find their way back to the car, and they're on familiar roads, and that's, that's a, that's not a positive. And, and I think the goal of everybody is to, is to make sure that public, our public safety departments can, can do what they need to do to keep everyone safe, the residents of Carver, and folks coming from other places to visit the fair. And that's what we all have to keep in mind. And with that, I want to turn it over to the, to the board for, for questions. And Mr. Ryan, I know you have some time challenges, so if you'd like to go first, I want to...
Sure, thanks. I just wanted to mention a couple of things, I looked into the websites last night, and so I was saying, if I want to go to the fair, let me go get information. So, they do tell you the directions, but they do have a important note, "There's absolutely no street parking allowed along Route 58, and violators may be subject to fines or towing. You may not," in capital letters, "park on the following streets outside the fair parking lot, Meadow Street, Rochester Road, Mayflower, or Crescent." I did go to multiple websites, because there's other websites that promote the fair, they all have the same information, telling people, "If you're looking for information, you're not allowed to park." So, they did due diligence, and I guess I understand the randomness, because, you know, if they're, they're posting this to people, and they're just showing up in town and violating this, you know, I was trying to figure out what else. So, that's kind of where I've been. What else can we do? It seems it's more the, you know, the random people that come into town. And is it possible to potentially put signage out on the major entry points that say "Fair Sold Out," you know, to, before they even get here, like if you're getting off of 495? If you see a sign "Fair Sold Out," I mean, right away, you know, it's sold out, I'm not kidding, I'm not gonna get in. So, maybe we could add some signage in some key entry points that tell people when it is sold out, so they just don't even get on the roads. That was just a thought I had, and I may have some more questions, but I'll, I'll pass on.
Others? Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, approximately, how many tickets do you sell at the door?
In all honesty, it's usually a couple hundred. On Sunday, which was the first nice day of the entire season, we sold more. But, but that's not what the, if you, if I look at all of our records from last year and this year, that's not what's happening. Our audience is slowly realizing that they need to buy them online, number one, and now, this year being new, that they have to buy dated tickets.
Okay, thank you. So, this is for you, Mr. Corbo. I'm wondering whether we can require that they not sell tickets at the door, and whether we can require that they always hire the buses, whether or not it's going to rain, shine, just have them on standby? Because clearly, they were not hired because it looked like rain, and then we had, you know, twice as many people. It seems to me there's got to be some mechanism that we can do with those two. So, it's a question for you, two questions, I guess.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, so the, the authority of the board, if you're, if you're going to modify these licenses to impose conditions, are, are the suggested conditions reasonably related to the interests that you're trying to protect? So, here, we're trying to reduce traffic for the protection of public safety. In my opinion, a requirement that the buses be in place regardless of what the weather is going to be would, would fit that description. The testimony that you heard was that, you know, we can't predict how many people are gonna show up, we can't predict in advance what the weather is going to be. And so, then, it's reasonable to say, well, given the experiences that we had, you need to predict the worst-case scenario. Likewise, you know, the, the issue of ticket sales is a direct impact on traffic. The more tickets you sell, the more cars that are gonna come. And, you know, yes, people who go online and see that it's sold out won't come, but, but if, if people know that they can buy tickets at the gate, they may say, well, they probably hold some tickets back, I'm gonna go anyway. And so, again, in my opinion, a prohibition on gate sales is reasonably related to your interest in controlling the, the flow of traffic.
Thank you. I have one more question. Do you require your patrons to give you a tech, a cell phone number? Because if you do, you could text all your patrons that it's sold out. And it's not a, it's an easy thing to do. It can, you can set it up automatically.
Right. Our, our ticketing system allows us that if we're not able to open, to be able to email those people...
No, I'm talking about a text.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I don't know that answer. I am not 100% technically savvy. I know what I'm doing right now with what I need to do in regards to this system. It's a question I would have to ask the ticketing system, the ticketing company. It's a question I would have to ask the ticketing system, the ticketing company, if that's something that they can do.
They could do it very easily.
Right. But what I'm saying is what we have done is limited the online sales so that, once it's sold out, no one else can buy tickets.
Except at the door.
Right. And again, we also have to be able to make a living in order to pay the police, pay the DPW, pay our property taxes in this town to be here, to survive. And when you have 18 days in order.
I'm sorry, aren't you a tenant?
Yes, and we have a lease that we pay everything. So, yes.
I think one, one of the other reasons that there are sales at the gate are for the folks that do not have credit cards. And in, in the world these days, there are still those folks that do not have credit cards and prefer to use cash. So there has to be some way for them to be able to purchase a ticket. Some, some folks that are older are used to dealing with just cash and they would like to take their grandchildren to the fair. And that is one of the reasons why that is in place there.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hewens, are you?
Yes, I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
I have a couple of questions. Chief, on the, when the, the line of people that are on Route 58 and sold this past Sunday, do you ask them if they all have tickets, if they are ticket?
Please use the mic, yeah.
Thank you. So we don't ask them, we're, at that point, when we're moving them by, they're the ones telling us they have tickets, that they bought tickets online, they can't get in. We're not asking the question, but they're telling us that.
Okay.
So we have no way to, you're talking about once it's tied up, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, once it's tied up, but we're talking to each individual person, we're not asking them a question, we're letting them know that the fair parking lot is full and there are no alternate lots and they need to move through. And then they're telling us, "Well, I have tickets that I bought online and why can't I get in?"
Okay. And then my other question is, for this past weekend, so Saturday was a rainy day, if somebody wanted to change the ticket, they do that online, is that correct?
Yes, they have to do it online, but they also have to do it by midnight the day before at the event.
Okay. So in other words, this past Saturday was raining, people, New Hampshire, wherever they were coming from, said, "I don't want to go today." They click on, they could change it for the next day?
No, not once the day, like for instance, if they were coming on Saturday and they decided it was too rainy and they didn't want to come and they want to change it to a different date, they can't do that. They have to do it by midnight the day before.
Okay. So the people that had tickets for last Saturday, say, and it rained out and they decided not to go, so they can't go again. They basically paid for the ticket and can't use it, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how, you had mentioned earlier that Sunday was not near capacity for online tickets, advanced sales, so.
That is correct. A lot of people, and then this is the nature, I guess, of this business, they say, "Oh, let's go." You know, people don't necessarily always plan a week in advance or two weeks in advance. They wake up and they say, "It's nice out," so people bought ticket. Because when I got to the fair site early, like I always do, and I looked at the numbers, we weren't even at that sold-out limit.
Okay.
And then within an hour, people, it's beautiful out, people want to come, people bought the tickets online. And then, then we stopped selling and we put it on our website, we put it on our social media channels. The fair is sold out today.
So, so you're saying, so Sunday, a lot of online sales were, were conducted, then?
Until it reached the limit.
Okay.
Correct. But it wasn't the limit that was the problem. It was an issue with people coming, like they'd been programmed to for the past 41 years. "It's a nice day, I'll buy a ticket."
Right. So, so a combination of Sunday online tickets and at-the-door tickets.
And the weather being nice for the first time, yes.
Right. And that, well, because what the point I want to bring is this coming weekend, Saturday's supposed to rain, Sunday, we're not sure, and then Monday. So if the same situation could happen this weekend where, again, your numbers that you look at, not close to capacity, but then say, Sunday morning, 500 people decide to buy tickets and the same for Monday.
Right. What I've done in anticipation of that and based on what happened on Sunday is I have lowered the number of people that can buy online.
Okay, but as, as.
And I've already put the buses in place as well.
So as far as, as far as the online, I'm sorry, the, the capacity number, you must have.
I lower, well, again, I know what we can fit inside our fair.
Right.
The number that I sell online is way below that.
Right.
In anticipation, if someone came and showed up and had driven and wanted to buy a ticket at the gate.
So that number that you have for the full capacity for the, for the fair.
Yeah, it's, it is more of a limit than a capacity.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a limit that you put on the total number of people that can fit into the fair any, on any day. See, my concern is that, is that on this coming Sunday, Saturday's going to rain, people are going to do online sales Sunday morning, people are going to walk up, buy tickets to the door, there is a number that you won't sell any more tickets at, is that correct?
That is correct, and I've lowered it even further from what the normal limit would be.
For the, for the?
For the day.
For the day.
Yep.
So that includes the online and?
Well, it includes how many people can actually purchase online so that if someone comes to the gate.
Right.
That we're not going to have the same situation we had on Sunday.
Is, is there, is there a stop number as far as at-the-door tickets you do as well?
Yes. We see, we see what's coming in and we talk with the chief, because we're always in communication during the fair day and on the roads, and then we stop it. And then we've also put that on our social media and on our website.
Okay. So, so I guess, all right, so, so there is, there is a number that you will not go past the fair as per day. Okay. And so the, the problem is, again, we don't know how many people are in per car. You could have one car that has six people, one car that has one person, and that's what's causing the, okay.
It's not, I don't think it's necessarily the people, it's more about the cars. Am I correct?
Anything else, Mr. Hoffman?
And then, so, I guess, let's kind of tell, but so this year, what would you say the percentage of people buying tickets at the, at the gate or the day of? I mean, just a rough.
Five percent.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
But then, obviously, this past Sunday went far above that.
That is correct, because I think what happened is people saw it sold out online and said, "Well, I can still do that." If that's the case, otherwise, most of the people are just used to being for 41 years again, just coming down and buying tickets.
Okay.
I can't, it can't change 41 years of history overnight. It's going to take a little bit of time.
Right. That's understood. Okay. Again, my, you know, my concern is just the next three more weekends that we have a rainy Saturday and a beautiful Sunday. Three more of these. Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask you to, to Ms. Ms. Hewens' suggestion earlier regarding trying to text people or things, when you, when you sell your tickets online, when someone buys a ticket, I assume they, they do that via email, so you have their email address?
Yes, we usually have, we, we should absolutely have their email address, yes.
And I know you're not the technical person, so I'm just, just making a suggestion and not looking for an answer, but I wonder if there was some way that you could either include in the ticket packet that they get when they buy the tickets, or if they, you already sold them the tickets, maybe you could do some kind of blast email just to, to notify these people in, in some noticeable way that you can't park on the street, any street. You have to park in a designated parking lot.
And you know what? Thank you, that's a very good point. And we do have that on the ticket. We have that verbiage, not only just on the website and the ticketing page, but on their ticketing confirmation as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That actually came as a request from the board through the meetings, and that was a, a great suggestion and that was implemented for sure because of that. So we wanted to make sure that was known.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter?
Sure. I guess, first question through to Mr. Corbo, I guess. These, these licenses that, that they're talking about, the entertainment license that we're going to look into and the transient vendor licenses, are these optional licenses that you can speak to?
Through you missed the chair. No.
So we have to have them?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's one question. Next one was, and I, I, we, we being the town, we being the emergency service people, we're not giving any numbers, right? Like, when you check in with the chief and say, "Hey, my system says I'm not going to be anywhere near my capacity, this and that," we're never given 2,000, 3,000, 5,000, 6,000, nothing. Okay? And is there a reason for that?
Well, one, we're a private business, so we don't publish our numbers, number one. Number two, though, the chief and I have worked well, very well together for all these years, and I know, again, we don't know how many people per parking, per car, but I know how many people will be coming in on a day. The ones that have bought tickets online, I'm talking about, for the dated tickets. And so I do communicate that with him, as well as our operations director, who's parking the cars.
Okay.
Just to add to the response here, I think probably part of that issue has to do with it being an outside event. So you're not looking at a structure with a certificate of occupancy that says X many people, 1,200 people, 600 people, however many people. So that goes to, I think, Mr. Carter's question.
Okay, so take it from the other direction. With regards to the current parking that's available, anybody gets this question with regards to, we know how many parking spaces we have at the outside parking lots, high school and the other areas. We know how many parking spaces are in the park, correct?
The, the fair parking spaces vary based on car, car footage, the weather that week. Sometimes when it is too muddy, there, you know, we're, we're all in Carver, the bogs can rise up and there's areas where, that cannot be parked. So it, it does vary from day to day.
So, so there's a number, low and a high, right? Roughly. So then, so you take that, now you've also got like a turnover. How many people, do people come to the fair for eight hours? Are they coming in for three hours, four hours, or parking space might, might turnover one, two, two and a half times?
Yeah, what, what used to work very well is that, once we filled our parking lots and we went to savory, then people, we would just send people back in because people would be leaving, and so people would go in and just find a spot. So there is turnover, yes.
Okay.
And they're not there for the seven hours that we're open.
So, so I would imagine you would know that if we said, "Here are all the parking spaces," you know your turnover rate, you've got a number there that if every parking spot was taken, this is your number. And, and could the park, could your, could your venue handle, handle that number? Like, is it?
Just, just our venue?
I guess what I'm trying to say is, one of the comments the chief had made was that if all the places are open, if all the parking's open and everything's ready to go, that there still might be a concern that we might have overflow into the streets.
Right. And, and what we have done, like I just said, is that I've lowered the online ticket sale amount.
Nope.
So that that doesn't happen, so that we can, if we have a good day, which we, you guys, we need to have a good day in order to pay our performers and everything else. I mean, we're a business, most businesses operate year-round. We have 18 days to make a living. We've already been closed two and a half of those days. So we have to have some good days in order to make money and survive as a business. So, that being said, yes, I've, I've taken the steps to lower the online ticket sales so that we don't have an issue and are able to park cars. And if we have a decent day with those numbers and possibly people showing up from wherever they're coming from, that we can facilitate our lots, savory, the high school, as well as Town Center.
Okay. So, so I guess, my question is that if all these parking spaces are, are open, manned, buses ready to go, odds are we, we, we will do the maximum we can to take into consideration your online ticket sales. Your people that just, "It's a great day, I'm going to show up," and they show up at your door. I don't know if you have people that bought a ticket for the week before and, and decide, "Well, I'm going to go anyways," you know, when they get a ticket. It's the wrong date, but I'm going to go anyways. So by the time they get to you and they say, "Here's my ticket," and you say, "We can't," that doesn't help the chief. The person has to go out, get back in their car and head out the other way. So all I'm saying is having everything opened, having everything ready to go, it's the best situation for you, in theory, and it's the best situation for us. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I will say that we have, we've only had probably maybe 50 people show up that had bought tickets for a previous date and tried to get in on the date, let's just say Sunday, this past weekend. And so that's something where we would turn them away, they'll be upset, but this is the new system that we're implementing and they need to know. If it's a horrible rain day and they show up, we were going to let them in. So, that, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah. So I think I heard the chief say that there was 3.7 miles of backed-up cars, which equated to about 975 vehicles. I guess in the end, if, so if we, if you had sold the tickets online, and it sounds like there was a combination of people in there that said they had tickets, you know, that they had already purchased online, and, and there was a randomness, so what happened with all that, I guess, in the end? Because a lot of people parked places, walked over there, but didn't they all get turned away and, and have to leave? And so what was the, how did it play out? That's what I was kind of interested in hearing, if, if there was that many cars.
We spent the week, two of us have spent the week responding to emails, refunding tickets and trying to appease our audience, yes.
Okay. So we, we had, it sounds like close to 1,000 unexpected people that came, came down and would have had to have left at some point, you know? So, so that does kind of go back to my point. If you are sold out, maybe we need signage, you know, so that people don't get on 58. You know, they, they know you're sold out and they're going to have to make a decision to, to do something or, you know, they know if they're going to try to get down there, there's going to be issues, but if you're sold out, they're.
Nope, and I appreciate that. And that's something that in all of our committee meetings, you know, we've had lots of signage, but that is not one of them that we have added, and that might not be a bad idea to do for our, you know, coming off of 495 or coming off of 44 before you get into the town.
Okay. Say, "King Richard's Fair sold out." And then is there any way?
Could I speak to that to all you, while it's open? That question? Could I? Thank you. So what happened to those cars was, we went out and spoke with each one of them, we moved them on. Some went up to Carver Square and parked, some parked on Shaw Road, some parked on Crescent Road, some parked on Meadow Street, some parked behind people's houses on Meadow Street and walked. Some residents sold tickets to park in the driveway and then they walked. So that, we dispersed, we got dispersed the cars, moved them on, cleared 58 by about 3:00. And around that time, as is normal, we started to see some people leaving the fair. I don't think that the, my experience in the road, and I've worked the road for a lot of years and I've done it, people don't start to leave until probably around 3:00. In any pre-sure manner, there's a few cars that leave during the day, but they start to leave at that. So after we cleared the roadway and we got, we started to see people coming out, people who would come back by, we told them, "Okay, you can try to get in there now." So, so once the problem alleviated, once the parking lot had a few more spots in, we did let more, we did get more people into the parking lot. But while it was full, there was nowhere to put them, so we just moved them by. Those people went and parked wherever they wanted to. Not as bad, they didn't park along 58 this year because we put the no parking signs up, and I think that was helpful. I think probably we need some more of those. In addition to your question about signage, we, the town, the police department has brought in extra sign boards that we borrowed from other communities to help with this problem. We have one, we've used that in the past. Now we have four. Those signs are prepared, in place and prepared, if we were to go to alternate parking, with a message that says, "KRF main lot's full, follow signs to alternate lots." However, without having the alternate lots in place, we couldn't turn those signs on because there was no way to. And all the signs we've purchased, that the fair's purchased, that we've agreed on, is designated to direct people to the alternate lots. But if there are no alternate lots to direct them to, they don't work at all. So we do have some signs in place. We probably maybe spread those sign boards out a little further, but again, those sign boards also require somebody to physically go to them and change them. We don't have the ones that are programmable. We're actually looking to purchase some new ones that are remotely programmable, but that's a, a part of the thing. But we do have those, we've brought them in, we borrowed them from other communities to help with the situation. So we do have those signs. And we do have a lot of signage that we've all agreed on to direct cars to the alternate lots. But we don't have any signage right now to deal with the lots being full and there being no other alternate lots. And I would add one more thing. On Sunday at the high school, there was a football game and there was probably, from what my officers went through the parking lot, probably 10 lot, 10 spaces there. So we may have to reconsider that as an alternate lot moving forward. That's just an operational piece of this that we'll have to work through. But there are, like you mentioned, there are things we're gonna have to fix along the way, and Sunday has brought up many of those that we need to do.
Mr. Fantasy, this question came up earlier while you were out of the room, and it may be more a question for the DPW. I don't know the answer, but chief, one of you may know, Route 58 is a state road.
Right.
Is there any chance we can reach out to the state and get a couple of programmable signs from them that we could place, you know, as close to Route 495 and as close to Route 44 in the north as possible that are just, you can turn on remotely that say, fair sold out, so we can do that quickly, so keep people out of that 58 corridor in between there?
I mean, we can attempt. I don't know if you have any connection that way, chief.
No, I don't. We can speak with John Woods and see if he does. Route 58 is a state road. However, this portion is maintained by the town of Carver. As you move forward north, it's maintained by the state. I don't, I believe that they would assist us if we asked them, but I don't have any contact there, but we certainly can do that.
Mr. Fantasy, could you reach out, and I don't know if they can be helpful, but maybe you could reach out to our legislative delegation and have Senator Pacheco or Representative Gifford reach out to somebody on our behalf and see if they could rush a couple of signs down here? That might not be a bad idea. Mr. Hoffman, I think you had another question.
Yeah, just one quick question. The alternate parking sites that we have, what, do we know the number of spaces that are on those?
I have not counted the high school, middle school, and I guess it would depend if they did have an event. I mean, when we spoke to Superintendent Neef, right? Neef? He said that occasionally they will have something in the parking lot, but, so that was a surprise to me that they had a football game on a Sunday. But, so I do not know how many spots, to be honest with you. I do know that there's roughly 150 or so in the town center. But that's what I know.
I would agree. I have counted the spots that I was told the school would allow them to use if there was nothing else going on, and it's about 120 at the school. But that, again, depends on if there's anything else going on at the school that day, right? So it's not, they've not designated the entire high school parking lot as parking for the fair. There's a piece off to the right behind the school, and I think there's about 120 there. But it really depends on who's there and how far out we go from there.
So on any given Sunday, we don't really know that the high school has 120 or the high school has five available then, correct?
Well, I'm basing that only on what was there Sunday. I don't, you know...
Yeah, because I heard the same thing, that there was youth football there most of the day and there weren't many spots available, so that's why, just as a, to be proactive if we have this issue this Sunday and we find out there's youth football there again, and you start to direct people to the high school and there's no spots. So, again, that's what...
Mr. Chair, could we designate the elementary school as an alternate parking?
So I believe that that has a more likelihood of having people, I believe there's soccer there, but I'm not positive on that. So I think that that's why they picked the high school originally.
Okay.
I think you're correct. I think I heard that there was soccer up there as well.
And thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Hewens, because we did think that they had maybe more parking and it was closer in the proximity of all the cars on 58, but the superintendent said that they usually have more activity going on there.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan?
Did I hear that we had used the Ediville parking in the past? And is that even still an option or not?
So yes, last year we did use it during the Columbus Day weekend. The issue was, one, they don't have lined parking, so we have to have our own, excuse me, parking staff there to do it. I do think that they would be amenable to us using the lot if we needed to.
I would agree. We did use it last year. We filled up probably 800 cars in that parking lot, and the issues are, as Amy said, they're not line parking, so you need a crew there to park the cars. You also definitely need a correct number of buses and a signage, because the biggest problem we had them using Ediville was people walking down Rogers Road and up 58, to the tune of probably 750 people filling up a lane, much greater than, as far as walking than we had this Sunday, but definitely a public safety problem that we can't repeat. So if we're gonna work to find another lot, we certainly have to consider those things and maybe, maybe we consider a lot further away, so they can't walk from, but they can be bused from. I'm not sure. But that's something we'll have to work out. I think we, I think there is the possibility. We did use it one day last year. It worked with some success, but it also created some public safety problems.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
And then another thought, I haven't, I don't have the answer to it, but is there a way to control the parking through the ticket sales, where they, on the ticket, they get some kind of a zone or some control of parking or a permit, so that, you know, you know how to manage the parking through the online sales?
That is, is a good question, and that is something we have thought through. The problem is, is when we are getting people off of Route 58 to get them into the fair site.
Right.
You know, we're opening lanes and we're getting them in. We don't have time to say, hey, did you bring your printed, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Printed thing to say you can park in here. So sadly, it wouldn't work. It's the same reason we don't charge for parking, because it would just, it would make the congestion that much worse.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so to Mr. Ryan's point, though, when you go to a parking garage, there are signs that say, take your ticket with you. So maybe you should have something on the ticket that says, bring this parking permit or whatever you want to call it, with you, so that they'll know where to go and you'll know where they're supposed to go, and the police will know where they're supposed to go, and everyone will know where everyone's supposed to go.
And again, that is a great idea, and we did think about that as well. You know, put it in the windshield, we can see it. People make copies of things.
Right.
There's just, there's no way to do it. There's no way to try to scan it and make sure, and make sure that it's not used from a previous weekend. And again, it will slow things down so much more that it'll back up 58, much worse.
Okay. Well, I think there's a few things that we all sort of agree will help. I mean, and I understand you're a private business and you don't want to disclose the number of tickets you sell, or, and I understand that. But ultimately, we have a, we know how many parking spaces are available, at least approximately for cars. And we know, you know, whether it's two people per car, three people per car, there's some number that we can use to approximate, based on ticket sales, how many cars are coming to the fair on a given weekend. And I think we can probably agree that we can't sell more tickets than we have places to park cars, because ultimately, that's the issue here. It's the cars. And that's something that I think the fair has to control on your end. We can agree on that?
No, absolutely, we can agree on that. And that, again, is why I took delivery of trying to lower that amount by a few thousand tickets.
And we appreciate that. I'm just trying to...
To see how that works in conjunction with that coming weekend and the buses.
Are there any dates that are sold out right now for the fair?
No. The people don't decide until, sometimes the day of, and that's exactly what would happen with on Sunday.
Okay.
I mean, I got there at 9:00. We still had 1,500 tickets still that could have been sold, and within an hour, it had sold out on the limit that we had put in place.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I forget, I forget your name, but you, we discussed earlier, I think from a question, I think it may have been Mr. Carter's question, but I don't remember, about how many cars can actually fit in the King Richard's Fair parking lot. We talked about, we know when it rains and there's puddles, and I understand no one wants to park in the middle of a puddle. But does the fair do anything on a proactive basis when, you know, if it rains Saturday but you have, it's a beautiful day on Sunday? Is there any way that you folks can do something on a proactive basis to sort of clean up the parking lot a little bit, so more parking's available?
We do. We try to clean up the site as well as the parking lot. We've got pumps in place to get any kind of puddles. We fill in holes. We push, we push the mud around, we get it all so that it can be as even and flat. Obviously, our goal is to park as many cars as we can within our own lots.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions? Mr. Ryan?
And on the bus situation, I know the rest of this year, you're gonna enact, you're gonna have the satellite lots and everything, but going forward, I suppose maybe you gotta come up with some incentive to have a standby situation where, you know, maybe it's enough money where if somebody's on standby and you call at the last minute and say, we need the buses because of, you know, the situation. I guess you gotta kind of work on getting that window to close a little bit, because as you said, you have no idea even going into like Friday or so whether you're gonna need it or not. So it's, it would be expensive to do that every weekend, and you know there's gonna be some weekends where it's very low, versus can you have a standby option where if you get people on standby, you just pay them what it's worth something and it saves you money in the long run, but it still compensates them for being on standby?
I would love to do that, and that is something that I would like to have a conversation with the Carver Public Schools about.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm sorry, just had one quick question. So each transaction that's done online, say, if a family of four, that means it's gonna be one car type thing. So can you get an estimate per day of how many potential cars will be coming that day? And I know it'll be a moving target, because if a lot of people, the day of, but at least you'd know ahead of time that we just sold 1,000 tickets, or we had 1,000 transactions this morning, and we sold 2,000, you know, would that help or does that take into consideration?
It would help. However, the issue is, you can have someone that buys tickets for all their friends and they arrive in three different cars. There's really sadly no way to, yeah, unfortunately, to do that.
Well, just thought I'd throw it out there.
No, good idea.
Could I make a suggestion based on that? I certainly believe, for the online at least, you could ask the customers, how many vehicles are you bringing? You have six people, is it two vehicles? And you could track that. When we get to 2,400 cars, we stop selling tickets and use that as a number instead of the number of people, because it's my belief that even on a bad day, we can probably get 2,400 cars in that parking lot, right? That's in your parking lots. So you know, once those parking lots are full, we're full. We can't exceed that. But that's just my suggestion. I think there would be a way to do that. I agree with you. Parking passes might be difficult, although I think you can do it in different colors or whatever and put them on the dashboard. But I certainly think you could track the number of vehicles that at least the customers tell you they're bringing, so you'd have a better number to use, knowing what we're gonna do for parking lots. I think that that's a key part of this and a key part of the alternate parking lots, is knowing how many cars are coming, right? And whether you use that to shut off sales or you use that to determine, okay, we're definitely gonna need more, we would know that, we could track that. And I don't think the, it would be a big take to ask customers to fill that information in when they bought tickets, because it certainly would be, we, the people, the number of people is not as much the problem. Although, big crowds in the fair is why I need police officers in there, but the real problem we're addressing today is cars, and if we had a better way to track that, I think that might be helpful. Just, but that was an idea.
No, I can look into that.
I think that might be an idea. Just sitting here thinking, hearing his question, right?
Yeah, maybe as a follow-up to that, back to the thing we talked about before, where you can't enforce a parking permit, but if you give them a parking permit, they're gonna ask how many they need for that. So that goes back to the chief's point, that if, you know, they buy six tickets but they want one parking permit, you now know you've got one car for six people. That's actually better for you, because it doesn't limit the ticket sales by the people, it's by the vehicle. So, you know, if each person, I buy one ticket and I say I need a parking permit, you don't have to enforce that. It's just the fact that they're checking a box that they need, you know, the parking permit, and at least you get a count now, back to the chief's point of the vehicle count, which is more important than the people count at this point.
And that's something, again, I can look into. But then we still have the issue of cars having to be checked to see if there's a parking permit.
No, you don't. I'm saying you don't have to do that. It just gives you a count. So if I'm online, I'm buying a ticket and I say I need a parking permit, I just check a box. You're not gonna enforce it, but you're gonna get a count of how many vehicles have checked that box for parking permits.
Yeah, we can look into that, too.
Yeah, not that you have to enforce it, it just gives you a better account, with the chief is saying.
One other thing that perhaps might be helpful, and I know you mentioned earlier that when folks buy their tickets online, they get verbiage in that ticket, saying, hey, don't park in the roads, you can't park in the roads. And I don't know if you have the ability to do this, but I know when I've bought tickets to things in the past, sometimes you buy them two or three or four weeks ahead of time and you sort of forget what's on that ticket. It might be helpful if every Friday, you could do a blast email to all those people that bought tickets for the weekend, just a reminder, you know, don't, you can't park in the roads. And I don't know how you would word it, and I don't know if you have the ability to do it, but I think maybe if you could do that, that might be some additional reinforcement to all those. I think anything we can do to let people know that they can't park on the Route 58 or the side streets is a helpful thing. And I don't know if you have the ability to do that, but that might be worth looking into.
We send out mass email to all of our people that sign up, basically. We have, I don't know how, 30,000 people. So we just send out an updated email saying what the weekend's events are, what's happening. That is something that we could add to that as well.
I think that would be great.
It goes out usually like on the Wednesday before the weekend, so...
I think that would be a helpful addition. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything else from the board? Any of the chiefs have anything they want to add? Mr. Fantasy?
No, good.
Good? Okay. I have a proposed motion that I want to read and then the board can debate it. And Ms. Roy, it's a long motion, so I have a copy I can hand you. Oh, you have? Good. Okay. So there's a suggestion, and if someone would like to move it, that's fine. So I would suggest that we, the board vote to amend the alcohol and common victual licenses for the remainder of the 2023 King Richard's Fair event by adding the following conditions, which will take effect immediately. One, the fair operator will comply with the temporary traffic control plan dated June 30th, 2022, with the additional requirement that two approved off-site parking areas will be open at all times, regardless of the weather, with shuttle buses to be provided by the operator. Two, no parking of vehicles shall be allowed on any streets on the town of Carver, and patrons will not be permitted to walk to the fair from the remote parking locations. Three, all traffic control measures in the plan will be in place for each day of the fair, regardless of the weather unless adjusted by notice from the chief of police. Four, there will be a daily increase of two additional detailed police officers on duty for each day of the fair, regardless of weather, subject to the police chief's determination of work hours. The police chief, in his sole discretion, may also require that additional officers be added based on operating conditions. The fair shall be responsible for reimbursing the town for all detailed police officers, all detailed officers provided. Five, the fire chief and/or the EMS chief may, in their sole discretion, implement additional personnel based on operating conditions and to ensure public safety. The fair shall be responsible for reimbursing the town for all costs associated with this additional personnel and equipment. Six, the fair will only sell those number of tickets that can reasonably ensure adequate parking of vehicles in the fair's lots and authorized satellite lots. Seven, the police chief, in consultation with the town administrator, may order that additional safety measures be implemented if he determines that operating conditions necessitate such measures, and any measures shall be incorporated into the licenses. Eight, the police chief, in consultation with the town administrator, may summarily suspend or revoke either or both of the licenses based on any failure of the operator to comply with these and other prior conditions noted in the plan, or in any other conditions that pose an imminent threat to public safety. In the event of summary suspension or revocation, the board will endeavor to convene an emergency meeting to review the decision prior to the next, prior to the next weekend, provided that the fair's request is received by the close of business on the Tuesday prior to the next weekend. That's the motion.
I'd like to make that motion, but I have a couple of additions. I'd like to add that no ticket sales shall take place at the door slash gate, and that the operator shall hire school bus drivers to shuttle patrons to and from alternate parking lots.
All right, you have a...
I'm sorry, Ms. Hewens, I didn't give the second part...
The operator shall hire school bus drivers to shuttle patrons to and from the alternate parking lots.
All right, we have an amended motion. Is there a second? So, I guess, for discussion's sake, my only concern about data, about tickets sold at the gate, is that, I understand the purpose of that thought, and in a vacuum, I think it's a good idea. I think the problem is that traditionally, this fair's been going on a long time, and on a long time, and a lot of people are used to buying those tickets at the gate. And I think maybe in the future, in future years, that might be something we could, we could discuss. But I, I just think for this year, you can say it, but in reality, there may be a lot of people heading to the fair that just plan on buying tickets. And, and they create traffic and they park in the roads, whether they actually get their tickets at the gate or not. They've already parked their car, and they've walked up to the gates. So I don't, I don't know if that, this year helps the, the problem we have in front of us. So I, I, I mean, I understand the thought, I just, I don't know if it's possible to communicate that to everybody.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, because it's something that would have to be in place and start publicizing and promoting, you know, almost a year in advance.
I, I, no, I, those are my thoughts on, on that.
Through you, to the second, second point, which Claire brought up, the school bus drivers, aren't we already saying that that's who we hire, right? So we're committed to that, okay.
Well, what this, what the motion that the chair read does not say that. It says that the shuttle buses shall be provided by the operator. It doesn't say the operator must hire the bus drivers. And I think that that's the issue. An hour later, we, we call up the bus drivers, and, you know, they're out of town. No, I think they need to be in place.
We, we have a signed agreement with the Carver School Board and the busing system. And as I had said before, we are putting that in place for the rest of the season.
I think it should be in our agreement as well, that's all I'm saying.
I, I, I think it's understood by everybody that if the, the buses are operating, that we have bus drivers operate.
I thought, I thought it was understood, too.
I'm not against including it in the motion, I just, I, I'm, I'm fine with including the motion, the motion about having, having the bus drivers. I have no, but we still have a motion without a second.
Well, let's, let's take the ticket sale at the door out, and the rest of it stands.
Okay.
Did you say second?
Second, no.
We have a second? Now we have a motion and a second. So discussion from the board. Mr. Ryan.
So on the second part there, no parking of vehicles shall be allowed on any streets. So it sounds to me that you're tying the ability to remove a license if people park on the streets. And I think the fair's done all they can to, you know, notify people that that's not allowed. So I don't know that they could be held responsible for random people parking and walking. The, you know, they've told people over and over again, don't do that. And if they choose to do it, I don't know that you could revoke a license. I mean, I, I do want to solve the problem. You know, I'm thinking about ideas how to do this, but I don't think holding, saying that you can revoke a license because people are parking their vehicles, they have control of that. So I, that's one of the things. And then, the other part, I was concerned about the legal issue, which we've gone back and forth about here, of doing this, and also the timing, where we're already at the end of this season. So maybe, I think in good faith, you know, the fair representatives have said they're, they've put in good measures to reduce the sales of the tickets and invoke the satellite parking for the rest of this year. They've already done that. So that's, that's, that's happened as an action. So, and then my other concern with a revoked-
Which, which, which number were you speaking, that was?
Oh, sorry, so eight. So eight, I was concerned about the legality of that, that we went back and forth. Plus, I had the, you know, thoughts as I'm reading this. So if you were to walk in, in the middle of a fair and say your license is revoked, and you've, they've got thousands of people in there, that would pose probably bigger issues for us. So I, I was concerned about that. I think, I think some of the thoughts of this language need to be worked into next year. But as far as measures this year, I, I think that they've done the best they can to, you know, and, well, to mitigate it by invoking the satellite parking and reducing the ticket sales, which is what we, we want to do to reduce the, the public safety issue. So they've taken those measures already.
Well, I think, if I could, I think the thought on number eight, first of all, nobody is looking to revoke the fair's licenses. We're not looking, nobody's looking, we're going to work together with the fair, as we have for the last, last year. And I, it, it was me that asked everybody to come into all those meetings, and I appreciated all that, and I appreciate all the, all the work that we all did to find common ground here. But I, I think the item, the reason for item number eight was, was the fact that if something happens at the fair and there's a real public safety problem, you know, we have notice that we have to give this board to have a, have a meeting, and we can only do that so fast. If something happens on a Saturday, well, well, we may, we may need to, there may be a reason that we need to take action quicker than we as a board can, because we have to post our, our meetings. That was the reason to authorize the police chief, in consultation with the town administrator, so that somebody could take action, and then we could subsequently hold a, hold a meeting. So that was the reason for that.
And if I could add, too, we have been told by council that it is within our right to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Not something we want to do, but.
Mr. Corbo.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just so, first off, on a point of procedure, to Mr. Ryan or anyone else on the board, you know, the, we got a motion in front of us, it's gotten now nine points to it. So, you know, if anybody wants to change anything, we should do a motion to amend, and then kind of talk that through, so that at the very end, we have a final motion to vote on. With regard to, specifically to number eight, yes, it is my opinion that you can delegate this emergency authority to the chief. You know, this is an event that occurs on weekends, it's drawing thousands of people. He, he needs to, to have the ability to act in the case of, of an emergency. And, you know, you've heard the, the dialogue between the chief and the, the owners and operators here. I mean, it's a very cooperative relationship, and I fully trust that the chief is not going to, you know, on a whim, decide to close them down. But, you know, we got to where we are today, because there was a, you know, a situation on Sunday that all three chiefs felt was a, a serious threat to public safety. If something even more imminent happened, you know, my opinion, he needs to have the ability to take that action. And, and it gives the operators then a chance to appear before the board, before the next operating dates, so that, you know, the board can either endorse that action, or modify it, or rescind it, or whatever issues can be worked through. But again, it really is just sort of to give the chiefs the ability to, you know, respond in the case of, of serious emergency.
Thank you. And just, so my, my opinion was that we did-
So is the chair?
Yes.
I threw you.
I would just suggest, Mr. Corbo, maybe you could define for everybody imminent emergency, as opposed to regular emergency, or, I mean, this is not, this is a last chance, this is like a last stop thing, this is not something we would take lightly, or, or put into effect without necessary. And I think that the term imminent is something that people should understand what it means.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yeah. I'm not going to hamstring you by, you know, but to, to be fair, imminent really means that, yes, I have no choice but to do this, or, you know, people are going to get hurt. And, you know, chief, I have confidence in you that, that you understand what that means. And, you know, to the operators, again, the chief has always, you know, treated you with respect, and, you know, acted in good faith. And I have no reason to believe that he wouldn't do that going forward. And nobody here is looking to shut this fair down, you know. But, you know, you heard the, the testimony that there was such a bad backup. What if there had been a fire, and, and the trucks couldn't, couldn't get through, or someone was having a heart attack? And so, you know, we just want the chief to be able to say, all right, this is, this is out of control, there's really nothing that we can do but, but to shut it off at this point.
May I, may I say something?
Just, if I, if I could, Mr. Corbo, just to your first point regarding a procedure. It was, it was my opinion that Ms. Hewens had offered an amended motion, Mr. Carter had seconded, and Mr. Ryan was discussing his, his thoughts on item number two and item number eight. So it may be that he wants to offer an amended motion at some point, but I, I thought we were in the discussion phase of the amended motion. That was, that was my opinion. So.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So the way I see the motion that's on the table is it includes the original eight points, plus the now ninth point of operator shall hire school bus drivers to shuttle patrons to and from the satellite. And so I just wanted to flag for Mr. Ryan or anything else, that if he wanted to change any of this, that that would be the way to go about doing it.
All right, thank you.
I just had, I just wanted to say one thing. So, safety is the most important thing when operating an entertainment event. And we take that very seriously, not just for our guests, but for our cast, our crew, anyone working with us to produce the show. Safety is the most important thing. And on Sunday, we did have some issues at the fair with someone going down with the cardiac arrest, but we were able to get the ambulances in in no time with not one problem. So I just wanted to, to state that. And then, I don't know what else I was going to say, so, there we go.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Ryan.
So I'm still trying to understand the intent of eight. So here we are, we have a thousand cars on the road, and traffic's a mess. So we, we're just going to shut down the fair right then and there, and then what happens?
Then we hold a meeting.
Well, no, you're, you're in the, so you, you've got a thousand, you've got a thousand people on the road, you've got all, thousands of people in the fair, and we're going to say, okay, let's shut it down right this second. That's what I'm trying to understand what eight really means here. Or does this mean that we're not going to shut it down on that day, but we're going to say, okay, it's closed as of the next session, so you can't open it enough again until we convene? That's what I'm trying to understand the language.
I think that's what it means, because-
I think, I think that's my impression.
Because it says the board will endeavor to convene an emergency meeting to review the decision prior to the next weekend. So if he shuts it down, we convene that Tuesday and decide whether-
So it's not shut down at the moment of the, it's just the decision's made, but then it's going to be the next time it would have been opened.
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so it's not to shut down the whole operation. This is, this whole thing is about revoking or shutting down a service of alcohol and, and food. Does that shut down? It may, you know, people may leave in droves. That was the intent here. And so we're not talking about shutting down the fair itself, because we don't have authority to do that.
Could I add to that? Logistically speaking, obviously, if, if there were a situation to arise that I had to shut the fair down immediately and clear it out, it would be a logistic nightmare. It would cause more issues than it would solve. And I can only in my head, not even, and think of an instance where we would do that, to just clear the fair. I mean, if there was some kind of terrorist attack on the fair, then we would have to do that and be, deal with it. But I think this is more along the lines of saying, okay, we've got another day of this, and we cannot continue this through the weekend, because that's what we saw last year, that it continued on. So we've got to be able to take some action. If we have a day on Saturday, like it was on Sunday, then we've got to say, well, moving forward, we're done, we're going to have another hearing and go back. And I think that's the intent of it, that's, that's what I hear, that's how I would see it. There's no condition that I would see in my head at the moment, dealing with parking or any of those issues that would result in the fair being shut down while it's in operation, because it would not, it couldn't work.
And it refers to the licenses, too, just the licenses.
Right. So I'm hearing something a little different. We have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and on Saturday, there's a problem. So we revoke the licenses on the Saturday, which means they can't serve on the Sunday and the Monday before we've had an opportunity to meet.
That's what it means.
So we haven't had an opportunity to meet.
That's what it means. And then we would convene on the Tuesday to decide whether we want to keep that revocation.
Or Wednesday, depending on a, on a posting notice, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Corbo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So here in the, the comments, perhaps a, a friendly amendment might be to say, the police chief, in consultation with the town administrator, may summarily suspend or revoke either or both of the licenses for the following operating day, on any failure of the operator, blah, blah, blah. Does that clarify the intent of the board?
It does. Ms. Hewens, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Does that, that clarify the help, helpful? Any further discussion? Mr. Hoff?
So, so just to be clear again, so that's just the license, they can still operate?
Yes.
They can't basically serve food or alcohol? That's what those two licenses mean?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody's, and then I, number six, the fair will only sell those number of tickets that can reasonably ensure adequate parking of vehicles in the fair's lots and authorized satellite lots. So we're not putting a number on that? Like, I know it's tough to get a number, but I don't, how do we know if that wasn't followed?
I, I don't know how we come up with that, with that number. Chief, you may have a, a thought, but I, I don't know how we, at this point, we haven't conducted a, I don't know how we come up with that.
I think we'll know if all the parking lots are full and people are still parking on the streets.
I think we will. I mean, it's, if anyone has a thought, I, I just don't know how, at this point, how we come up with that, that actual number. I mean, if there's, you know, if you have, you know, 150 cars lining the streets, you're going to know you oversold a lot. I mean, it's just, it, it is, it's a, we're doing the best we can here. I think that's-
No, I, I understand. I'm just saying that if this is one of the, one of the issues about a possible provoking license, and we don't have a concrete number, or we don't, it's, you know what I mean?
Well, I think the police chief will be able to tell us if the lots are full.
Yeah. And I, I think we all have to work together here to try to solve this problem. And I think that's part of what we have to do, is rely on the, on the folks at the fair to, when they see they're getting to that number, to, to just stop selling tickets for that day.
And that's, and that's what we did on Sunday, right, immediately when we found out, because we got calls, what do you mean, you're sold out? We're sold out. And, and we're trying. Guys, this is a, this is a whole new thing for us as well. So we are really trying to do everything we can to make it so we don't have any traffic issues. We don't want traffic issues. We want people to come in, have a great day, have enough people that we can pay our bills, and everyone enjoys the fair, and the residents are happy, you're happy, we're happy, our artisans, our performers, and everybody, you know, is happy. So we're trying to do everything we can. And again, it's a work in progress. And I took the, I mean, I didn't even know there was a meeting, an emergency meeting. I happened just out of the blue, text the chief and say, hey, in anticipation, this was on Tuesday afternoon, in anticipation for this weekend, based on Sunday, even though Saturday looks like a rain date, I've got the buses lined up, whether it's going to rain or not, we're still going to have the buses in the lots, and I've cut down the online sales dramatically so that we don't have another issue. And then that is when he said, do you have time to talk? I said, yes. He said that you had commit, you'd had an emergency meeting. So I was taking steps before that even happened.
We appreciate you making the effort to, to get here. We, we truly do.
Oh, no, I don't, that, that's not what I meant. What I meant is I had already taken these steps before ever knowing anything that was happening.
And, and Mr. Fennessy, I hate to put too much on you, because I know it's a Friday morning, and it, it's difficult, but I, I do think if we can somehow have our legislators reach out to somebody and let them know that, hey, it's a long weekend, and if there's some way you can have someone get a couple of signs down here that, that we can, you know-
If we get one of our legislatures on a Friday before a holiday.
Well-
That'd be interesting.
Hopefully, we, hopefully there's someone in their office. But we, we need to do the best we can to try to get, make that happen.
A little call the state DPD.
If we could get those signs, that would go a long way, I think, toward solving problems. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, so I, I want to solve the problem. I mean, it is a public safety issue, I, we need to solve it. But I'm not sure how this motion does that. So I'm thinking through this again. So it's a Saturday, we revoke the licenses. That's not going to change people coming on Sunday and Monday. There's still going to be the same volume of people are still going to come down, because they're not going to know that. The only course of action the fair would potentially have is if they said they were closed, but they're probably not going to do that, you know.
Remember, all, all we did was suspend the licenses. We didn't close the fair.
Right, but it's not going to solve the traffic problem. That's what I'm trying to say. It's, it's like this weekend, say we, say revoke the licenses this weekend, do you think we're going to get any less people coming this weekend to the fair?
You might, if it's on the, on their website, that there's, you know, no alcoholic beverages served.
They would have to put that on the website.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, so I-
Mr. Corbo.
You know, here, here are the concerns of Mr. Ryan, they're similar to the concerns expressed by, by Mr. Hoffman. And, you know, I think the, the idea here is, you know, there are clearly some, some issues that need to be worked on. But many of these issues are really issues that are going to have to wait until the, the off-season, and are not going to be able to be perfected at, at this time. And so the idea behind this, this motion is to really put out the expectations of the board in writing, so that the operators are on notice that the onus is on them to control the traffic. Is there going to be no traffic as a result of these conditions? Of course not. It's a one-lane-in-each-direction road. There's going to be traffic. But the idea is that, you know, for your expectation that the owners are going to do everything within their power to limit that traffic, including by limiting the number of, of ticket sales based on the capacity of the, of the parking. And, and again, you know, this issue of, of taking emergency action in the field, you know, is probably something that the chief would do anyway, without this, this there. And so the idea is just the, the expectation that the operators are going to properly manage this. And if they don't, then, you know, the town is going to have the ability to step in and, and take action to make sure that the public is protected. And, you know, now that these issues have come to the, the full attention of the board, you know, now we have something to work towards in the next, you know, 11 months, or whatever it is, before the next, the next fair comes up. And so, you know, I wouldn't let, you know, what is the saying, like, be, let perfection be the enemy of the, the good here. I mean, I think, you know, you're, you know, making your expectations known. I think they're understanding what the, what the expectations are. The chief certainly understands what the expectations are. And, you know, the way I, I understand it, you're not looking for a reason to shut them down. You're just looking to put them on notice that they need to do a better job, and this is how they do a better job.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Anyone?
No. Okay. We have an amended motion in a, in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's a three to two vote? Three to two? Okay. Thank you. I'll close the hearing at this time.
You still have the motion. That was the amended motion. So you still have to vote on-
Oh, that was voting to, so that was a vote on the amendment?
Yeah, I thought that was a motion to approve the amended motion. Okay, okay.
On the amendment.
All right, that's a motion on the amendment. Okay. All, all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Three to two. Thank you. I'll now close the, the hearing. We do have a couple of, just quick administrative items we need to take care of. The minutes of September 5th, 2023, is there a motion on those minutes?